Here we go. Good evening. Good evening, and I will now call the December tenth, twenty twenty four meeting of the Ben Lapine Board of Directors to order. I would like to introduce our participants this evening to my immediate left director, Amy Tatum, Keena Chadwick, Cameron Fisher, and Shirley Olson, and Vice Chair Carrie McPherson Douglas has joined us virtually. And also I'd like to introduce my immediate right, excuse me, Superintendent Dr. Stephen Cook, Deputy Superintendent Dr. Lisa Burke, and Burke, excuse me, Board Clerk Janet Bojanowski, and I'm Marks Legrand, the Chair of the Board. And I didn't forget Ross, I'm gonna get you, I'm gonna get there in a second, and our newly appointed Ms. Ross Tolman as well. Thank you. We will now please rise and gentlemen, remove their caps, and we'll be doing Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. And my computer's being goofy again. I will now move to Gen Item Number Three, Review of the Agenda. Dr. Cook, are there any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes to the agenda.
Phil, Board Members, are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, Board Chair Legrand, I would like to pull Item eight C off of the consent agenda. I move to do so.
Do we have a second for that?
All second.
Do we have a second? By Director Tatum, and a motion by Director Olson. Is now called for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Thanks for the delay, thanks Carrie. Any, any nays? Any abstentions? All right, discussion, please.
I would just like to make it clear that the most important thing we do as a board is hire and evaluate a superintendent, and the proposed change on the superintendent evaluations process, I understand the role of a policy, I understand that a policy is a big look, but we have fought for the last three, not fought, we have worked for the last three years to get some meat onto board policies that are transparent so that folks know what we're really talking about, and I would like to have a chance at a later time to review that recommendation.
Yeah, I agree, I am completely opposed to the new policy and don't see any reason why we would change it from the original policy.
Any other discussion? All right. Thank you. And now we will move to a Gen Item Number Four. At this time, we'll be swearing in Ross Tolman as the Zone Six Director. Unfortunately, his wife has suffered major injury, he is unable to join us in person, so we'll be taking his oath virtually, and this is going to be led by Director Cameron Fisher.
Hi Ross, okay, so I, I'm going to read sections and then let you, and so tell me if I go too quickly, so. I state your name.
Ira Ross Tomlin.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
Constitution and the laws of the State of Oregon?
The Constitution and the laws of the State of Oregon?
And the policies of Ben Lapine School District?
And the policies of Ben Lapine School District?
During my term, I will faithfully and impartially discharge the responsibilities?
I will faithfully and impartially discharge the responsibilities of the office?
The office, to the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Thank you.
Welcome Ross, thank you very much.
Good beer.
And at this time, I will turn it over to Dr. Cook for the dish recognition.
Thank you Chair Legrand, as you guys know, this is the time where we typically celebrate champion of our students, but at this time, we're going to do a different award, we're gonna have another Above and Beyond the Call of Duty Award, we give those out, about three or four of these a year, and so I'm really excited to share this with, this one with you. It's not every month that we get the honor of presenting the Above and Beyond the Call of Duty Award to a staff member or to a student, and I am very thrilled to give this recognition to a deserving eighth grader from Cascade Middle School who through her brave actions is an example of who we should all aspire to be. So at this time, Ally Campbell, would you please join me up front? I just talked her into taking some of the mic and talking when I'm finished. Okay, this fall, our Transportation Department was contacted by a parent of a student who was the target of a bullying incident on one of our buses. The parent shared that fortunately, an eighth grade student intervened to help. Ally was that student, Ally chose to bravely step in and call the students to account in an effort to end the bullying. Our beloved Assistant Director of Transportation Tina Bandi said, "I was so impressed to see the way in which Ally interrupted the harassment, she saw what was happening and without hesitation stepped in. I watched," this is Tina, "I watch a lot of video on our buses, and this was the most impressive response I have ever witnessed from a student. She did it without belittling the offenders or drawing undue attention to the victim." When administrators at Cascade Middle School congratulated Ally on her mature and upstanding behavior, Ally responded that she was simply doing what she knew was right. Cascade Dean of Students Leah Boone, Leah, wave? Said Cascade Middle School is so proud of Ally, and we consider ourselves lucky to have watched her continue to grow and shine in her years at CMS. All right, the certificate says, "In recognition of your courage and strength in standing up for your fellow students, when you interrupted a bullying incident on your bus ride, you protected your peers and challenged the offenders to repair and change their behavior. Thanks to your actions, your community is safer and better able to thrive. Ben Lapine Schools is proud to honor you with the Above and Beyond the Call of Duty Award." Ally reminds us that when we, we all have the ability to step in and interrupt bullying, for those who feel in the moment that it is unsafe to intervene, there are other options. The Safe Oregon tip line is an online avenue for anonymous reporting, please go to saforegan.com on the web. Students, you can find the Safe Oregon tip attachment on your iPad through the First Step app. Youth Line is also available as a teen-to-teen helpline that offers reporting and support via phone, text, chat, and email. These resources along with others can be found at bls.fyi.safetyresources. Ally, please allow us to congratulate you and your efforts. Yeah, I want to give her the mic, and while she's talking, I'm gonna ask her parents to come up and get a photo, and Cascade Middle School Administration just keeps having this, like this recurring theme of celebrating their school's students, so why don't you guys come up there too, so we can get everybody to come on up? And while they're coming up, let's hear what Ally has to say about this particular experience.
I don't really have anything planned to say. It kind of felt like it hurt to see, like, sorry, it felt like it hurt to see someone that was like, doing nothing to these kids that were just blatantly being rude, and she's like, she's been so nice to me, and I know how it feels to be made fun of for looks and just being who you are, and it just felt like the right thing to do.
We're gonna take your picture, we need a tissue, we can't have her crying, she did a wonderful job, we need to celebrate her, come on up guys. Let's get you on both sides of her. Here. This is a good thing, right? Come on up, come on. Yeah, okay, yeah, there we go. Okay, come on over guys. All right, one more round of applause for Ally. And that's it for recognitions tonight, thank you. Oh, that's, if you get a certificate, you have to stay for the whole meeting.
No, you don't.
All right, thank you, Dr. Cook. The Board of Directors, and District Leadership, value communication from students, families, staff. Oh, student advisory, I know, I skipped over to student advisory, sorry y'all, my fault.
The Student Voice Council is excited to be here once again, we'll briefly go through some introductions before starting our presentation.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it, thank you.
Hello, my name is Cooper Alkire, I'm a sophomore at Summit High School, there I'm a part of Student Council, different clubs and sports, like Social Justice Club and Wrestling. I was inspired to do SVC to make a positive impact in our community and really help others feel heard.
I'm Iris Marshall from Ben Senior High School, I'm a senior, and I joined Student Voice Council to gain experience and make an impact on our school and community. I'm the president of DECA, Business Club at Bend High, as well as an active member in Environmental Club and Cross-Cultural Club.
And I'm Finnegan Howell, I'm a senior at Summit High School, and I joined the SVC Council because I want to make a positive impact on the district.
I'll start our presentation off with talking about a review of the listening session we had with, SVC and the Equity Coalition had with Policy Expert Dr. Hips from Washington, DC. We discussed a variety of topics ranging from student resources to student involvement and overall ideas for improvements to our school. The main points we hit on were fundraising, different methods of fundraising, how that is explained to donors and participants, and the distribution of fundraising schoolwide. We also discussed the impact of listening to the student body and the importance of clear communication to students, faculty, and families alike. A full report, a full report of the, our listening session will be available later.
And just to let you know, to add on to that, I will receive a report from Dr. Hips as well, just to let you know, and then he has to present next week to DC, and I'll be with him when he does that, so just let you know.
Later in that meeting, we also talked about the attendance policy for Student Voice Council and how a member if not attending two meetings without communication to a leader will be reconsidered for their position, as well as talking about, as well as talking about, we watched a video regarding a last year's school board meeting where we just evaluated what clear communication and presentation looks like at these school board meetings and what to do and what not to do.
Lastly, the Student Voice Council has decided on the three main topics we would like to focus on for the upcoming year of 2025. The three topics are bias incidents, college and career readiness, and mental health support. We will divide ourselves into three subcommittees based on each one of these priorities, and these subcommittees will come up with a plan of action for the following year. We hope to be able to tell you this plan of action by the next board meeting.
Thank you for your time and consideration, if you have any questions or follow-ups, please let us know.
Directors, do you have any questions for the Student Voice Council?
I don't really have a question, but that's impressive that you had the opportunity to meet with the Equity Coalition and with a very distinguished speaker, so good for you. Just know that we are very interested in how you move forward and how you plan to get input from other kids, other students at your schools. So just know that if we can help in any way, or if you'd like to have us involved, we'd be happy to do that, so, anytime.
Thank you, we really appreciate that.
And in addition, in addition, don't forget tonight, as we have different topics and stuff that we talk about, if you have any questions or want to interject, please make sure that you continue to do so. I think you know that by now, but I just want to continue to make sure we verbalize that, all right? Thank you very much. I know. I know, I know, it always does, okay, I have a computer issue, just letting y'all know, anyway, I'm working on it, I'm trying to get it fixed. All right. The Board of Directors, Leadership Value Communication from Students, Families, Staff, and Community Members as it helps to guide the work of Ben Lapine Schools. Public comment is just one of those avenues available to ensure this connection. Members of the Board may always submit thoughts, questions, and concerns to the Board via email as well as in writing. Individual Board Members also make themselves available for phone, video, or in-person conversations. This being said, I want to remind the public that while this is a meeting of the Board of Directors that takes place in public, this is not a meeting, not, excuse me, not a meeting with the public, it is a meeting of the Board to conduct district business. As such, the Board would not respond to public comment made during tonight's meeting. Instead, issues may be recorded and referred to the proper staff panel to follow up with you, and we report on that later on in other meetings. A timer is provided on the large screens you all see above, to the virtualities to ensure every speaker receives updates during the presentation or remaining time. If the speaker goes over time, or if the speaker's message is not in adherence with our policy, for example, being personally directed, abusive, discriminatory, repetitive, or off-topic, I may ask the speaker to cease and terminate the speaker's privilege to address the Board. At this time, I will call Rachel Eder, Eder Query, is that correct? Query, thank you Ms. Query, I appreciate it very much.
Okay, better, okay. I speak to you this evening as a parent of three daughters who are students in the Ben Lapine School District. I also come as a primary care provider in this community, as well as a member of Central Oregon Gun Safety Advocates, of which there are quite a few members here tonight. What I'd like to speak to you about is firearm safety. I was in eleventh grade when the tragedy at Columbine happened, and never in a million years did I imagine myself with children who would have to do active shooter drills in their classrooms. I did not anticipate my twelve-year-old would have to join a youth advisory to collaborate with other students around the state to come up for strategy, with strategies for safety in their schools. I'm really proud of her, but I feel it's tragic that our children feel the need to solve this because we can't. This is a matter of public health, consider it something on the same line as helmets, you know, seat belts, things like this. So actually, what I was gonna say changed a little bit in light of the recent announcement that I believe came out today in the source. The district will provide free gun locks for families at the education center, and we have seen messaging for safe storage included from the district, so we'd like to thank you. We very much appreciate the work the administration has done to advocate for safe storage, we believe this saves lives, we know this saves lives. We also like to thank you for your earlier decision to present, to prevent, conceal, and carry on school property. Gun violence isn't the school district's issue to solve, but we thank you for using your platform to provide awareness and the resources, and we believe this will save lives, so, thank you very much.
Thank you. And now I'll call Sarah Culp, is it Culp? And if I, if I mess up your last name, please correct me, I want to make sure I get it correctly, all right?
Hi, I'm Sarah Culp, I'm a parent of a nine-year-old who until recently was a Ben Lapine student, and I'm actually here with Ian and Kim who signed up to testify, so we were hoping to kind of all go together, to talk about the organization called Beam. So I'm gonna actually let Ian start it off as he's our Board President.
Hey, how's it going? My name is Ian Kay, hi Lisa, how's it going? I'm the president of the Beam, and just want to let you guys know about the Beam, the Beam is an after-school care program that serves neurodivergent youth, grades K through five. We currently rent space at Bear Creek Elementary, we're awaiting our 501(c)(3) status and currently have base funding through a co-grant until January 2026. We work with all the kids with extra energy and really big feelings, and we're really good at it. And we teach social emotional learning and provide academic support, these are the kids who require the most support in our schools and have the most trouble finding support outside of the school environment. The Beam has been around for two years, but the staff have been doing this work for a lot longer. Our staff have worked for the HDSD, Ben Lapine, Residential Treatment Centers, they're highly qualified staff, they're not just regular after-school nineteen, eighteen-year-olds, yeah? And our team loves collaboration, we actively reach out to collaborate with parents, teachers, professionals, and the, and the lives of the students. Our staff fully believe in the model, kids do well if they can. Our Board has a diversity of knowledge that includes parents from previous students, other professionals in the industry, and business professionals. We believe, we believe this diversity makes us stronger. Why we are here, we're looking to build a partnership with the school district. We serve some of the most challenging behaviors in the district and offer those students a place to build skills that were transferred to the school and home environment. We know that the school district has long-lasting partnerships with organizations such as Boys and Girls Club, Ben Parks and Rec, and Campfire. We serve a niche.
Hey, real quick, real quick question, Kim, is Kim here? Do, are you gonna add anything additional to this, or can he go ahead and use your time to do, so I'm trying to make sure we can get his point across, so I'm trying to make sure.
That's possible, we thought we had more time, so I'm really sorry about that.
No, 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 we can add it together, you can use Kim's two minutes, is that okay with you, Kim?
Is that okay? Okay, and then we can come back, it sounds like.
Thank you very much.
I'm sorry about this.
Because I know she's gonna be speaking on the same topic.
Okay, so we are looking to build a partnership with the school district, we know you guys work closely with the Boys and Girls Club, Ben Parks and Rec, and Campfire. We serve a niche population of students that aren't able to attend programs like these and could strongly benefit from a program that caters to their needs. When you support the Beam, you're not only supporting the student who is neurodivergent, you're supporting their family, their friends, their classmates, their teachers, and the kids that they play with. In short, everyone wins, not just the one kid. It is helpful for everyone.
I can speak up?
No, they can't hear you on the recording, so we have to jump in. Okay, we have a, oh, there it goes again. We have a list of ways that you guys can support us, I'm gonna hand it over to my colleague right now and let her speak for the remainder of her time.
Hi, again, so I'm Sarah, I'm a mom, my son is currently a fourth grader and he's in his second year of attending Beam after school, he loves it and is absolutely thriving there. But after-school programs like this are not just for fun, Beam has been a lifesaver to him and our family. Sorry, I'm gonna get emotional, let me tell you a little bit about him, well, I'll cut some of that, he's super smart, kind, caring kid, he's got all the supports and privileges of a middle-class family with two professional working parents, and he's the kid that contributes to disrupted learning in your schools. He has been excluded or suspended from huge parts of his learning and social opportunities at school. He has a mix of disabilities and behavioral health challenges that have caused big behaviors at schools. He's been restrained, secluded, and on shortened days more than I can even count. Beam has been the thing that has gotten him stabilized so that he can participate in school. So, anyway, I'm not really here to talk about all that other stuff today, but just to emphasize that context, that Beam is filling in a gap that our community needs and the continuum of programming at Ben Lapine needs. You have a huge gap in your continuum for kids with certain behavioral problems or challenges, it's not a problem, certain behavioral challenges, and certain kinds of disabilities. Kids are falling through the cracks, they are causing danger to other kids and teachers, and Beam, I think, is part of that solution. So I just really want to encourage you to explore partnerships with Beam as an official part of the school district to support and serve these kids, and, you know, keep them safe and learning. Thank you for the opportunity. Sorry about the.
Thank you Sarah, no worries, thank you. No worries, thank you for your time, I appreciate it, and Kim, thank you for being so generous to be able to give him the time to be able to do that as well. Next, Megan Perkins?
Hello? Good evening, my name is Megan Perkins. I am a city councilor, a concerned community member, and most importantly, the mom of three kids in three separate Ben Lepine schools. So mornings are fun. I'm here with other community advocates for gun safety and safe gun storage, including my daughter, to say thank you and to encourage you to continue this work. My heart actively hurts when I think about the school staff and the parents who had to be in that moment of pure terror at Pilot Butte Middle School. I got a small taste of that terror the very next day when my son was in the same classroom sitting right by the gun that thankfully turned out to be fake at Ben Tech Academy. No one should feel like this. There are a lot of times as a city councilor when people email us or do public comment, and it's about something we can't control, like national interest rates. But I've learned these past four years that we have to take advantage of every single advantage and every single opportunity to do things that may appear more small that can make a difference in someone's life. Speaking out about gun safety and about safe gun storage is an example of this, and I want to thank those of you up there that have spoken up and been super-strong advocates for years. I'm looking at you, Director Tatum. I was so very pleased today to see the family spotlight include information about getting free gun locks and providing supplemental information and resources for family on safe storage. Thank you for this, and please keep doing it. Please keep working with the amazing groups who just want our kids and families to be safe. Please keep getting the word out and speaking up. It might mean we might have to not go through that terror again, it might make that difference. So thank you for what you do and what you stand for, and I know the advocates in this room look forward to continuing the work together in the future. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Perkins. Thank you, Ms. Perkins, I appreciate it very much. Is there an echo on that one? Yeah. No worries, thank you very much. We will now move to the consent agenda, I will entertain a motion to approve- approve this consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, Ross. It has been a motion by Director Tatum and second by Director Tolman, thank you very much. Is there any discussion? All right, now call for a vote, all in favor? Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, it passed, thank you very much. Think I'm turning it over to... For eight, correct? Fine, I'm trying to get there, yeah, I'm getting there. This computer is being so funky. All right. And now we'll turn it over to Dr. Cook for the consent for information.
Thank you, Chair Legrand. Included in the consent for information this month, we have our annual report on EL 4.6, child nutrition, and a follow-up, a couple of follow-ups to written public comment that we received at the November board meeting. We have several policies that the district is adopting this month, DFD-AR, KG-AP, and KG-AR related to the use of district facilities. The changes are aligning to the current district practices. You'll see also several nutrition service policies are also included. EFA-AP incorporates language from the AR, which is being deleted, as well as updates to align with HB- House Bill 3199. Several other nutrition regulations were reviewed, but no changes were made. You will see these are included in the board packet and noted that no changes were necessary. This is a practice, a newer practice for us to ensure that policies and regulations are being reviewed in a regular sequence and then tracked for those updates. We also have aligned the talented and gifted program policies and regulations to align with current OSBA policy updates that we received from August 2022. I'm glad to stand for questions.
Yes, Superintendent Cook, I have two questions. So one, IGBBA-AP tag policy that says we're, you know, removing the 97th percentile from the policy, but our tag plan still holds the 97th percentile. And so I'm hoping that you can give us kind of an update on, you know, are we going to be updating the tag plan? And I really hope that when we do, we make sure that we look at ODE, they have examples of exemplary tag plans, and ours is nowhere near, I think, where it needs to be. So I would love just an update on that and 97th percentile.
I'm going to defer that to Deputy Superintendent Lisa Burke.
Yes, so we acknowledge that our tag plan is not in line with this currently, and that is eventually our plan, is to have all of these things in line. Right now, we've convened a group of folks that are kind of focused on this, and they have a few different kind of milestone markers that will happen throughout both this- this spring and into the fall. It is likely that the first change around this 97th percentile, as far as a quantitative measure, will change probably first, and later we'll see also some qualitative measures that are in alignment. As we've looked at some of the plans that you're kind of referencing, all of the plans really want there to be both qualitative and quantitative measures and have that be kind of a robust build-out. And so that's our intent as well. We're just in the- in the kind of infancy stages of that work. So that is our intent throughout this spring and into the fall, that by fall, we will be implementing some different qualitative, or quantitative rather, pieces that are more locally bound at each school, and then that will morph into quantitative, or qualitative rather, over the- the course of the following few months.
Excellent, thank you so much. My other question is about EFCAR, because it mentions caffe- caffeinated drinks being sold in high schools. And when I read that, I was kind of like, huh! And I, you know, messaged a couple of pediatrician friends, just what do you think about this? And they both said, no, absolutely not. And I did a straw poll of my, you know, medical, you know, colleagues today, and everyone said, no, why would we sell caffeine in high schools? And so I just kind of want to know the scope, and I know you may not have the answer to this now, but the scope of us selling caffeinated beverages in high school, you know, we know teens get plenty of caffeine anyways, why would we promote it? And, you know, caffeine can contribute to anxiety, sleep disruptions, mental health issues, which are things that we want to, you know, not worsen in our kids. So if you could, if you- and you may not have the answer now, but the scope of how we sell caffeine, if we limit it, what milligrams are allowed in beverages, if we cut off sales at a certain time of day, those are all things I would just like to know more about, and if we've reviewed this policy with medical experts to make sure that it is in alignment with best practice for the health of our students.
Sure, yeah, I'd like to, we're going to have to get back to you on some of that, but I can tell you at this point, part of what you saw adopted or regu- recommended comes directly from ODE's recommendations, which are to deny caffeine access in elementary schools and middle schools, and allow caffeine access in high schools. Whether districts to choose to do that is also could be a local decision, and I think that's where the starting place is on this, and I think whether or not we are interested, what I'd like to get- get back to you before we decide whether or not this is something that we're interested in supporting, or potentially having the board make recommendations on changes, and then we would adopt those, would be to see what the overall impact looks like in our high schools right now, and how they might be accessing drinks that contain caffeine, and give you an update on that. And I would anticipate we would be able to have some level of report on that back next at the January meeting. That would be, we would incorporate that in the report of like follow-ups for public comment.
Directors, any other ones?
Yes, please. I would like to refer back to Director Tatum's comments about the talented and gifted program policies and- and regulations. I would like to suggest that we delay putting those out for public action until we have a chance for that committee and that work to be completed. Lisa, that seems a little more appropriate to me. Let's let the good people do what they know how to do, and then we'll run it by for public comment.
I agree as well. I think that's a, I thank you, Shirley, for mentioning that.
So these- these aren't going out for public comment, these are just alignment to statutory changes or ODE-recommended changes that OSBA has pushed out. What we can do is look at what currently is in place for tag policies, look and see whether or not this exacerbates the problem or has little to no impact, and then we'll make a decision based upon that. Thank you for that feedback.
Any additional information? Students?
At Ben Senior High School, we have two student stores run by students, four students, one being a cafe where we do sell energy drinks in the morning, including Celsius. So that is one way we distribute funds. I wouldn't say we're directly impacting students' access to caffeine, just because we're making it more convenient, but I wouldn't say we're, like, intending them to have it, but we're also not, like, they're still going to have access to caffeine at any store, we're just making it more convenient. But we also make, I would say, like, about 45% of our sales are caffeinated drinks, and all those funds go back to our business program at Ben-Tai, as well as Caldera. Caldera also is a program.
So I do want to comment that a Celsius has 200mg of caffeine per can, which is more than double what the American Academy of Pediatrics recommends that, you know, teen have in a day. So, and I, as a primary care provider, have seen teens have significant health impacts, including severe anxiety from consuming beverages like this. So knowing that we're selling beverages in our schools that have more than the double the recommended caffeine intake for kids is something that I absolutely now feel even more strongly that we need to be looking at. You know, there are ways to raise money that aren't harmful to health, you know, 18-year-olds, you can buy vape pens, but we don't sell vapes in our student stores to 18-year-olds, right? So why would we sell a product that can harm your health and negatively impact you?
We do follow Oregon Health Guidelines, like, as they distribute, like, what the limits are on what our drinks are. But I know that those can be flawed as well, I acknowledge that.
Thank you for that.
One more comment on this, since we're on it. I've seen at various high schools having cafes, like, actually making mokas, lattes, that sort of thing, and students being baristas. And I'm not sure how that would fit if that becomes a coffee cart thing, and would we just require all decaffeinated beverages? Just throwing this out for the high school world of, it's worth considering some of these other things.
But that's where a policy and a group of, you know, experts looking at it, looking at the health impacts, and, you know, time of day, right? Because coffee in the morning, a cup of coffee in the morning is very different than selling coffee at 3:00, when we need students to be able to go home, go to sleep. You know, teenagers need nine-plus hours of sleep, and I know most of you are not getting that. But without that amount of sleep, it's contributing to anxiety, health issues, increasing the likelihood of self-injury, accidents. And as someone who did adolescent primary care for 10 years, I can tell you, so many of the issues that I dealt with in my patients were directly related to poor sleep. And so if we're selling caffeinated beverages, particularly highly caffeinated beverages at any time of day, then you're, like, we are contributing to harm.
Thank you. Directors, anything else? The only thing I would like to bring up is about the school food distribution policy. My question with this is if we're having fundraisers, again, those type things, because, you know, men have food service to be able to do some of those things, like, you know, some of the different event, vending events, does that come into that? I'm sorry, I'm losing my voice. In addition to that, if they're having tournaments and different things, does that add into that? Does that shift into that, or is it more advertising? So I just want to make sure we're clear on that piece.
Can you, Chair Legrand, can you say again which of the policies you're specifically-
Oh, I'm sorry, EFA, AR, sale of food or distribution on- on school property.
So this is, this would be an overarching guideline for, that would include the impacts of fundraisers that are- that are designed to sell and provide access to foods and drinks that are, that's just an overarching guidance on? And right now, we're matching the recommendations from ODE, and I recognize the point you're making about whether or not that's still the best decision, and I'm glad to have that conversation. I think it's a wonderful topic for our Student Voice Council to opine on it as well, and so, and we'd also have a wellness committee that- that lives right in this space, so I'm very excited for the dialogue. Don't know how this is all going to turn out, but I look forward to the conversation.
Thank you, Dr. Cook, appreciate it. At this time, I would like to welcome Dr. Laura Norquist. Hi, Laura. High Desert, ESD Director of Alternative Learning Options for the annual report.
Good evening, it's a pleasure to see you all from this perspective, and Joel G. I just have a few slides here. I want to start by introducing some key program leaders who are here tonight, give you a, just a, basically, a very brief review of the district's ALOs and the district's responsibilities in evaluating those alternative learning programs. Our featured program tonight is JbarJ Youth Services, so they're going to have a more in-depth presentation, and then after that, we'll open it up for questions, if you have any questions about the evaluation report, ALOs in general, JbarJ, those can be directed at the program leaders or to myself. But not new to you, but new in this position, we have Melissa Barnes Delacchia, who is the Director of Bend International School. From the Central Oregon Intergovernmental Council, which has programs here in Bend, in Lepine, and at the Juvenile Justice Department, we have Chris Schofield, who's the new education manager. And Chris, nobody else is? No, okay, we thought we were having a couple of other COIC folks here. And then from JbarJ Youth Services, who oversee the Youth Ranch, the program at the juvenile, the J5 program at the Juvenile Justice Center, and the Academy at Sisters, we have Keith Riggs, who's the academic director of JbarJ, and Eric Seber, who's the assistant academic director there. So, Joel, next slide. This is just a list of the programs that I mentioned, these are all of Ben Lepine Schools' contracted alternative programs. I did want to note for you that beginning in the 20, beginning this year, and so for next year's report, Heart of Oregon, for a variety of reasons, has not been included in any district's evaluation report. They will be going through the formal evaluation this year, and we have a small number of Ben Lepine students who are part of the Heart of Oregon program, so that will be included in next year's ALO evaluation report. And then, Joel, next slide. I just wanted to briefly explain my role as the coordinator of the program, as I share with the program leads. It's- it's really 10% evaluation and 90% support. All Oregon school districts are required, both by law and also in Ben Lepine, your own policy, to annually evaluate all contracted alternatives. So that is part of my job and part of the conversations we have. But more of the job is just providing ongoing support. As you see, we have a couple of new people in leadership positions. Sometimes these programs can feel a little like islands unto themselves, they're small, they don't have a lot of leadership structure, so it's nice for us to all network together, for me to share resources from districts, from the state. One of the things that we've done already this fall is really try to standardize the reports from all the different programs, so you, as a board of directors, when you're reading the annual report, it's kind of structured the same way for each program, and you're getting equitable information from each program. We've also been focusing on training around legal issues and providing access to our alternative programs for training that is happening in the region, whether that's through the culture of care or district trainings that are open to participants, so working on that. And without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Keith and Eric.
Thank you, and then she said, I'm Keith Riggs, I'm the academic director for JbarJ Learning Center, and with me is Eric Seber, my assistant academic director. Maybe, there we go. So, nice title slide. Our mission statement at JbarJ, for those of you who- Our mission statement at JbarJ, for those of you who don't know, the top is our company mission statement, and then there below is our learning center. Promoting integrity and developing critical thinking in an atmosphere of positive relationships and mutual respect. And all students are capable of being confident, self-directed, lifelong learners. Who do we serve? We serve adjudicated youth, thirteen to nineteen years of age. The average age is sixteen years old. These are students with a history of an unstable educational environment, and school is traumatic for most of our students. Looking at some of our data, the average math and reading levels are at grade six. Ninety-five percent of our students were credit deficient. The average is 6.5 credits behind upon enrollment, just over one year behind on average per student. Well, over half receive special services, and these are students who often need help one-on-one or in small groups. And fortunately, we're able to provide that for them. On average, students have attended three programs or schools prior to arriving at JbarJ. And as you probably can guess, those transitions can be very difficult for these students. So we meet our students where they're at, making an effort to establish relationships, determining what motivates that kid, figuring out, figuring out how to reach each unique individual student. And then impactful practices, as Eric said, one of the mindsets, we approach all of our students with understanding that school has been traumatic for a good portion of them. And so we use the CPI model of trauma-informed care, where it really comes down to getting to know our student. And once they, we've gotten their records from the reprograms, we sit down with our students, come up with an individualized plan in which we provide a path to graduation. Some of that will be the use of GED, credit recovery options, Edge Annuity is an online platform that we use as well to fill in gaps where students might have. Some of our hard data, last year, we served 170 total students. A hundred and nine of those were non-duplicated. Duplicated too would be somebody who started at J5 parole and probation program and then transitioned over to the Boys Ranch or vice versa. Of those, a hundred and nine non-duplicated students, forty-two of those were recognized as having IEPs. And so we were able to service all of those and sixteen ELL students as well. And additional highlights include the number of high school credits that were earned throughout the year, which is 426. That's about four and a half per student. Thirteen received a high school diploma, and six GEDs were awarded as well. I want to add on that, with the 4.27 credits earned, their average stay is 109 days for students within our program. So. Additionally, we have our vocational program. That was developed as a need that we saw on property. We have students who are graduating, who didn't have a next step prior to going home. And so we developed vocational program. We use the Paxton Patterson modules that teaches students essentially laying the foundation of a house up to finishing carpentry and every step in between. We've also partnered with COCC this year. Students just completed the Small Engine Repair course. They started a mobile program and were able to come out to us on our ranch property and just got approval to do another course, starting in January, for those vocational students, as well as high school students who need that career elective class as well. And then last, we have our student voice. So all of our students are adjudicated, and so it's very hard to bring them here or to have pictures and audio, videos of them. So we interviewed three students, and I'll give you some more information on those individual students. But we asked them six simple questions. Number one, how many programs had you been to prior to JbarJ? Number two is what was your experience or your mindset about school prior to entering our program? How is school different here? What do you take the most pride in in your time at JbarJ? What does your next step look like? And any additional comments that they might want you to know about our program? And then.
Directors, do you have any questions or?
Before I came to JbarJ, I was in six programs. Before I came to JbarJ, I kind of was just like, I didn't really like school. You know, I didn't want to do it at all. You know what I mean? I didn't think it was beneficial for me until I came to JbarJ. And then, you know, I had the support and help with teachers on my side that showed me the bright and the future of school. And, you know, showed me what it's really all about altogether as one, and that's what really helped me. It's more lenient. I think that, you know, being here, there's more wiggle room and space, and there's a lot of teachers here, more than, you know, the past six schools I've been to. You'll be helping this kid, and then y'all come to me as soon as possible, and you know. And that's just the support that we need, you know, in a school kind of system, environment, stuff like that. Some staff, you know, are like, I'm gonna spend time 30 minutes with this kid, 30 minutes, you know what I mean? But here it was like, all right, I'll spend like a minute, you know, help him and get him situated, come to you. If I got to go back to that kid, I will. One of the things I'm most proud of is my grades. They have improved majorly, and I used to not be on track. But ever since, you know, I came here and started working with the teachers and got my life on track, I noticed that my grades are way better than it's ever been before. My next step is to leave here, of course. And when I go home, I'm gonna go, you know, go to a different school and stuff like that. And I'm gonna play on a basketball team and, you know, just try to get everything together, you know what I mean? Maybe get a job, maybe get my permits or something, you know what I mean? But yeah, definitely go to a school and keep building on my grades and my skills. I think this school is very important to a lot of youth here, and y'all do a lot of help for us. You know, regardless of how you're feeling on the outs or when you're at home, you know, you don't bring that negative energy here. You kind of give your mind a fresh, new start, and y'all think about our lives and where we're headed in life, instead of, you know, what's going on at home.
So happy to say that that student did just graduate our program, and so he has now transitioned to his homeschool. For, if you did not know, students come from across the state. So he transitioned back home, and early reports, he is doing well in school. And then student two, I'll just give you, he's on an extended diploma, came to us with credits scattered all over, and we'll hear his interview now.
I've been to two different programs before JbarJ. Before JbarJ, I thought I was never going to graduate, and being at JbarJ, I've been close to graduating. School here at JbarJ is different because we get a lot more one-on-ones. We can ask teachers for help as much as we need. The one of the things that I'm most proud of at JbarJ is being able to make 12 credits in nine months of being here. After JbarJ, I plan on enrolling myself into two different welding academies. JbarJ does really good. Their school is really good for like kids with disabilities. Like me, I have a reading disability. They've helped me grow with my reading. They've helped me get all of my schooling done, and I'm just happy for them, and I wish them the best through all the schools.
And that student is very close to graduating. He's got like .02 credits left. It's really close, so hopefully he'll be crossing the finish line soon. Student three, so this is a student, as you see, came in as a junior with four credits. And so he was able to utilize the GED for proficiency credits to get caught up to his junior year. And as part of our program, he has now enrolled in Mountain View High School as well. Once they've reached a certain level, they're able to go to public school with PO approval and all of that. So, student three's interview.
Before JbarJ, I was at one other program in Hood River, Oregon. My experience with school before JbarJ was I was using substances in the bathrooms, failing my classes, getting in fights, not showing up, getting expelled. School here is different because they offer us very many opportunities to earn more credits and catch up, because most of us here are very far behind. The teachers here also have more time to work with us one-on-one and have more patience to deal with us, knowing that we are more troubled students academically. The thing I'm most proud of since being at JbarJ School is how many credits I've earned. I came to JbarJ with not enough credits to even be halfway through freshman year, and now I'm caught up and ahead on junior year. After JbarJ, I will not be going home because I've recognized that schools around my house and my house is not a safe or healthy place that I'm able to be successful in. So I will go to an independent living program, and from there, I will continue working towards graduating, getting my diploma. After I get my diploma, I'm going to go to a trade school and get certified for welding and heavy diesel mechanics. The last thing I want to say is thank you to Keith for helping me get on track for graduating early, and thank you to Mr. Kelly and Mr. Lawrence for always being there for me, helping me one-on-one, helping me keep my grades up, helping me get my GPA up. So thank you, JbarJ, for helping me be successful and catching up in school.
And then my, my closing comments were, I'm not sure who voted for the GED for proficiency credits or which of you. But if you'd like to see that in a positive light, please come visit our programs. It provides a path for students who are severely credit deficient, students who had given up on the idea of graduation. And so it provides an avenue that they can achieve that. And so, thank you. And again, if you would like to come out and see our program, please do. Any questions?
Directors, questions?
I don't have a question, but I do like to thank you all for sharing those, those clips. It's so powerful and so meaningful to hear it in student voices. And, you know, there are a few things that comment here, like teachers are on my side. Student number two shared that, that they're happy for JbarJ and that he wishes y'all the best. And then student number three, who was ahead of where he needed to be. I just really appreciate the personal testimonies and also the, I don't know, the level of intellect that they, you know, that they're describing their experiences. And yeah, super powerful. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. Thank you. I agree, those voices really helpful to hear that. First, do any of your students graduate with a modified diploma?
Yes.
Do you have like a general idea of percentage-wise or how often you see that?
I don't. I know it's less common than a standard.
Oh, just curious. And then, second, you mentioned that you hear maybe how students are doing when they're back at their homeschool. Is there any follow-up with maybe partnering with that homeschool to get those kids back transitioned? Or is it more just like, okay, your time ends with JbarJ, you're back there, and there's not like a kind of, you know, continuum of services or at least communication with teens?
There's not with the school, but on their treatment side, they are required, once they graduate the program itself, they check in for the next two months with their treatment coordinator. And so they're following up on more of the legal issues that have brought them to us, but that connection does stay, and they can call us at any time.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I have a question. Do y'all have data on once they leave JbarJ and they return to homeschools, what those graduation rates are?
I do not, no. My question is directed mostly at demographic breakdown of the students, population, what does that look like? Additionally, to piggyback with Director Fisher and Chadwick, excuse me, Chadwick, sorry about that, is follow-up after graduation in terms of going to trade school, making sure they, if they do go to community college or they have, or they get, is there a direct handoff? How does those things look like to be able to continue to follow them on their pathway? Because many of them, like I said, they were, because they said they're going to go to trade school, but how many are being follow-up to make sure that they get their apprenticeships, everything done? Do we have those abilities as well? And my final question relates to Bend-Lapine Schools' impact. A lot of students from our region, because I know they come from everywhere. So is there an abundance of students coming from our own district coming to your, to your camp as well?
So I'll start with the demographics. So it's in the report, but of the 109, 51% are white, 6% black, 25% Hispanic, and 15% mixed race, as well as there were one native islander and one Alaska native, I think. And so that's our demographics there. The follow-up is something that we're definitely looking for or looking to build on. It's not in place right now. Third question was, third question? Will you repeat your third question?
Bend-Lapine students, sorry.
Oh. Maybe 2% of our students are from Bend-Lapine area. Trying to think off the top of my head, I can think of one, so.
My follow-up question, with the population being so largely populated with students of color here in the population, do they have access to be able to garner any of the cultural-type aspects of the community or be a part of some of the programs that are out here in our community, because they're here?
Yeah. As students reach higher levels, they're able to do more in the community, and so that's something that the treatment side definitely pushes for, including that. But yeah, students have access to all of that.
Because the reason I'm asking is always to try to build community, because many of them are away from their families, especially, you know, as people of color, and we know the demographics set up here, bless you. And so forth and so on. So I'm just trying to make sure they have access to those things, that's why I was asking.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Well, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Hey, I'm sorry, go ahead. Ross, Ross Carey, I'm sorry, do you have a question? I'm sorry, I totally forgot.
I don't have a question.
Oh, volume.
I wanted to say I really appreciate the report. I learned about all the different alternative learning options the district has, and I was not aware of many of those. And so I just think there's a lot of great work being done for.
Hey, Ross.
I appreciate that.
Hey, Ross, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, unfortunately, your volume was really, really low. Do you mind repeating your question, please?
Sure. Let me, let me turn that up. Okay, can you hear me now? Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, I didn't have a question. I just wanted to say that I greatly appreciate the report and the presentation, but I learned a lot about the, all the different alternative learning options the district has. And I was not aware of many of those, and there's a lot of great work being done for a lot of students in the district. So I appreciate that, and, and thank you for all that great work.
Thank you. Director Douglas?
No additional questions at this time. Appreciated the questions from the other directors, and thank you very much, as I said, for the reports and especially for the student voices.
Thank you very much.
Can I ask a general question? It's not to JbarJ, those, thank you so much. This is more a question for our district leadership. You know, the Desert Sky Montessori, we have seen their test scores lagging, and given that we are asked to approve these charters, and I have no idea how you pull this data, but I would really love access to data on how those students do once they enter middle school and how they compare to their peers who have gone through our elementary schools. So we can know, is Desert Sky, you know, with their test scores, are they actually preparing schools, are their students to be successful in our middle schools? And I think that's data that as a board we should have before we're asked to approve their charter, at least for next year.
Amy, thank you, or Director Tatum, thank you. And I, I'm sorry, I meant to say that Heather Phillips had planned to be here tonight. She's ill and so was unable to make it. One of the things, and I can be in touch with the district about this, is I'm not sure to, they may be collecting some of that data, but I think you ask an excellent question.
Yeah, kind of a follow-up to that. I was curious, on the Oregon Technical Land School profiles, it does show whether schools were more favorable or less favorable over a year, trending. And I'm curious about, is there a specific threshold where, I don't know, whether the district intervenes or what does that look like?
I think that the district has the right to do whatever they want to do in terms of looking at that growth or lack thereof with a charter school. We would hope, of course, that the first step would be to be in consultation with the school about concerns and looking at ways, you know, getting more context around the situation. And then if, if in fact improvement needs to be made, that there could be expectations around an improvement plan. I don't think, Director Chadwick, that there's a specific number, but again, that's up to individual districts in their contracts with their alternative learning programs. um, programs.
Yeah, that would be, I would, I would love to hear that. And also, you know, the, the supplemental, well, it's not supplemental, the ALO report, right? There's, uh, for each school is the, the meets or does not meet criteria. Um, so curious to hear how those aspects are evaluated and measured. Yeah.
So let me back up to the, the very first part of this was the, the question about how, um, last year we approved Desert Sky Montessori's contract, which is a five-year contract, if I'm not mistaken, and would go through 2028. And I think part of what we would want to determine before Desert Sky Montessori would come back to this board for approval in 2028 is whether or not the contract holds them accountable for the things that we would say are the values of the district. And if there is a gap in that, then we add that, that documentation in the contract. There's currently some things in there right now that there were in dialogue about. And, uh, Dr. Nordquist is, is communicating regularly with Dr. Burke about those expectations. As far as specific data on students' performance, that would be a new, uh, pull for us. And I think that would be interesting to, to do some tracking. And I think it would be important for us to, to know and understand, um, you know, we're working on those kinds of data systems for all students. And it would be, I, I would see as much value as tracking students coming out of all of our schools, going into the other schools. But I'd also like to add that it's still important to note that the idea of opt-outs totally skew that data to some extent. And the older students get, the less likely they are to participate. And so I think it's, we've got to be careful. I think it's valuable, but I think we need to be mindful of the fact that that's not truly the only measure of performance. But I do like where you're going with that.
Thank you. Directors, any more questions for Dr. Nordquist?
I do have a question. Um, Dr. Nordquist, hi, welcome home. I am still a bit confused about the difference between a charter and an AOL, ALO, ALO. Uh, and then we have our choice programs. So I, I kind of tried to chart out the five programs and which category they come under. Can you just quickly remind us of how those play out?
Yeah, I, specifically in talking about charter schools versus programs like JbarJ. So under the state law, in terms of annual evaluations, that covers any contracted public or private program, any program that enters into contract with the district. So the charters have five-year charter renewal, so they're under contract to Ben Lepine Schools for that five-year period of time. Our alternative learning options like JbarJ and COIC are both private programs that contract with Ben Lepine Schools to provide services for, um, you know, adjudicated youth, at-risk youth, um, who have left or are not thriving, um, in our K-12 programs. In addition, then, Ben Lepine Schools has a number, a fairly large number of choice options, which are not contracted. They are district schools and programs. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. Um, COIC is my only other question. Where does that one?
They are like JbarJ, they are a private contracted alternative learning program.
Thanks very much, that helps.
Thank you, Dr. Nordquist. Appreciate you very much. No, thank you. Nice to see you as well. Uh, next, we will hear from our chief executive, excuse me, oh my God, Chief Human Resource Officer, Steve Aaron. Two of them, I'm telling you. Yes, yes. Fahrenheit's better, right?
Chair LaGrane, Vice Chair Douglas, board members, uh, Doctors Cook and Burke, um, Clerk Bojanowski, members of the Student Voice Council, colleagues and guests, both in the room and, and online. Thank you for the opportunity to report tonight. Appreciate it. Start my timer so I can pay attention to how much, uh, time I'm taking as I speak. Thank you for, for your time tonight. And, uh, boy, what a interesting and challenging night to be in this batting order. Uh, the, the bar's been set high from our, from our student recognition to our meaningful public comment to our, um, lovely, uh, lively debate about things relevant to our Student Voice Council, uh, to, uh, to our last report. I feel like the bar is set high and, and, uh, there's a lot of pressure to, to carry on. This is the time that's been set for the report that we've historically called the Staffing Report. You may recall those have been here for a few years. On my, in my first year, I came in and replicated, uh, the Staffing Report that had been previously, uh, presented, which had some demographic and some hiring trend data. And the board at that time said there's additional data we'd like to see. And we came back the next year and tried to drill down on some of that. So, uh, the second, third year, uh, of my tenure, um, we reported on demographic and, uh, hiring trend, um, in, uh, fairly, uh, granular detail. Last year, we did that in December and then in May, we came back and reported on some, uh, culture and, um, and engagement, uh, measures that we had, we had undertaken in HR with the organization. And this year, um, as Dr. Cook asked me to come in and report on EL 4.2, I said, you're looking for the staffing stuff, you're looking for the culture stuff, you're looking for both, you're looking for more? He said, 4.2. So I'm here to talk about 4.2 tonight, which is a little broader than what we've talked about in the past. When I take EL 4.2 and I distill it down, I distill it down to eight bullet points. And, um, there may be, uh, the need for, um, the board and administration to have conversation about these eight, because there may be someone in there that, that warrant, um, some examination, some revision. Um, I'm going to be speaking to five of the eight tonight. First one I want to speak to is the, the, uh, the first bullet point of fostering values-aligned organizational culture. And there's a couple of different ways that we do this. I want to talk first about something that we've talked about before, which is the demographics within our staffing. These are just our basic staffing numbers, and we'll talk a little bit about hiring in a second. But we have roughly 2,000 staff, roughly 1,000 certified, roughly 850 classified, and roughly 125, 100, or excuse me, about 150, uh, between administrative and confidential. So roughly 2,000 staff. In our demographic data as to sex, um, there's been a fairly constant report on this of roughly one-third male, roughly two-thirds female. And in the last two years, we've included non-binary as a reported, uh, category. But this has been a fairly constant, uh, demographic, uh, profile, uh, over the course of the last, uh, number of years. Regarding race and ethnicity, I think this is where we've seen some very significant change over the last several years, um, that I think the organization, uh, can be proud of. You can see that, um, the categories are white, Latinx, black and other. And the, the easiest way to spot the trend is in the, um, representation of, of, uh, white folks in our organization. It was at 93.5% in 2018. It's at 89.2% in 2024, which represents a substantial movement, 5% swing nearly in, um, um, uh, racial demographic, a 4.3, I think, I'm rounding, um, a swing in racial demographic over the course of that period of time. When we break down the demographic by employee group, um, you can see that, uh, the certified and classified groups by sex are, uh, pretty reflective of the percentages we talked about earlier, roughly one-third, two-thirds. And administration is roughly 50/50. I'm going to talk to that in just a moment. As to race, um, you will see that, um, our least diversified employee group is our certified staff. Our most diversified is our classified staff. And the most, uh, uh, diversity showing up in our classified staff in the Latinx ethnic group. I want to talk for a minute about administration staffing by sex. Because when I first arrived here, this was identified as an area that the board expressed an interest in very specifically seeing change. At the time of, I, I arrived in 2021, but it, the 2020 data, which is what we were presenting on in 2021, the 2020 data had roughly 60%, 40% male and female represented in administration. And as of now, we're very close to 50/50, we're very close to, uh, 49/51, um, in terms of representation. And so that 12% percentage point swing in, um, representation of female administrators, um, I think is a very significant, um, indicator of the degree to which the district has been committed to ensuring, um, that we, um, moved away from male dominance in administration to closer to equal representation in administrative, uh, uh, work. The board has asked in the past for the comparator, and this is one of the things I remember from my first year, is I didn't have this data. And the board, uh, asked for this. So we've made sure to have this data since, the comparator between, um, uh, students and staff. And we still are not to where we need to be in terms of representing, um, our student demographic profile. Uh, we are roughly 80% white in our student body, roughly 90% white in our staffing. And the, the biggest, uh, place where that shows up is in our Latinx, uh, pop, uh, ethnicity population. Another area related to fostering a culture, uh, that reflects our values is in labor relations and employee relations. So this is, uh, information that, um, was covered last spring, spring of 24. And I, I don't want to spend a ton of time on it, but I wanted to just remind us of the conversation at that time. Excuse me, please. We talked about there being a philosophical shift in how we engage, for example, with labor, with our employees and with labor. Um, and, um, I would report that there's been continuity and, uh, continuation and consistency in our commitment to that, the commitment to transparency, engagement, collaborative discussion. We represent different sets of interests. Those interests are in conflict at times. Those interests clash. The question is, how do we step into conversations about the conflict between those interests in a way that's respectful, transparent, um, worthy and earning of trust? And I believe that we, um, have and continue to establish ourselves as genuinely committed to earning trust and building trust. I think our bargaining processes were flexion, we had difficult bargaining, we talked about that last spring. We had difficult bargaining, no doubt about it. We had a lot of very difficult issues to talk about. But I really believe the parties came out of the process with respect for one another as to how we were trying to engage around it. It wasn't perfect. We had moments of, of bruises and, and, and frustration. But I think that if you compare our bargaining processes to those around the state, um, I think both sides felt like we were having very meaningful, very engaged conversation. And, and the proof, uh, as to whether or not my perception is accurate is in what my labor partners would have to say. And I invite you to ask them, uh, what their experience has been. We have Labor Management Committee with OSEA. We have, uh, one-on-one labor management engagement, uh, with BEA. Um, we're very serious about that being a place where we're going to have conversations about, uh, issues and try to address them at the lowest level possible. Um, and, and, and try to identify places where, um, if at first blush, we're in conflict with one another, there's room for us to find compromise. We're not directly or solely responsible for the employee resource groups, but we partner with our DEI colleagues, um, in support of employee resource groups. And, um, a new thing that we've done this year is the formation of insurance committees, where we're having deeper conversation with our labor partners about what their members are interested in by way of, of insurance plans. Wellness engagement, my colleague, Andrea Wilson is present, but, uh, asked to not be invited to the dais. So, um, if you have questions, I might break that, that, uh, promise I made. Um, there's really two aspects to, to this, and that is, uh, wellness promotion. And so for example, um, we have, uh, a new employee assistance program, Canopy. And I think the thing that's notable about that, it's real-time care. It's not a digital app with referrals. It is crisis line counselor contact. And, um, we, we're proud of the fact that that was a, a move in, in a programmatic offering that was meaningful. And I think that the user experience is substantially different, uh, in relation to. We've continued the Care Solus, um, assistance with provider coordination around mental health. And there's an Oregon well-being trust that is offering some grants. We will be going for a capacity building grant in January of this year. That's as relates to wellness promotion, as relates to risk mitigation, because it is also a part of wellness as a whole. We have some ergonomics and other resources like that. For example, uh, Andrea was out to transportation and worked with them on, uh, posture and, um, seat, bus seat, uh, ergonomic, uh, work. Provided replacement and, and upgrades of what are called Yak tracks, uh, to assist, because our transportation folks are some of the folks who have to be out there in the, in the slickest of conditions and, and places where, um, the sidewalks and parking lots haven't been treated. And, um, and so, um, uh, that in, in an attempt to mitigate, uh, risk, fall risk. And Velocity EHS by SAFE, I have to be perfectly candid, I couldn't speak to that in detail if my life depended upon it. But it's one of those areas where we are continuing to lean into resources that are offered by either, uh, um, partners or stakeholders, um, in the various areas that we have. And SAFE obviously has an interest with us in constructively mitigating, uh, risk for our employees. Brown and Brown is our, um, uh, insurance advisor and, um, they are engaged, for example, in preventative sidewalks in helping us identify, uh, OSHA concerned, what would be, uh, issues of concern to OSHA in advance, so that we can be proactive instead of reactive to, to OSHA. So those are some of the, the wellness type of activities that we've engaged. All of that going to foster a values-aligned organizational culture. The next item that I have is internally develop, externally recruit and retain highest-quality staff. This is where we're going to talk a little bit about those hiring trends. This is the data that I, I mentioned previously about our staffing levels. And this is the year-over-year change from last year to this year. So you can see it's a drop of about 27 staff, uh, from last year to this year total. The bulk of that, as you'll notice immediately, is in the certified ranks. And, um, my understanding is that that's predominantly related to, um, our sizing our certified workforce in reaction to the diminished, uh, um, student enrollment that we've experienced post-pandemic. This is the year-over-year hiring comparison. So we don't have, um, a, a great tool for measuring turnover. So what we have done as kind of a proxy is we've looked at hires from outside the organization relative to our total, um, hiring activity and taken a look at what that means in relation to turnover. It's our best proxy indicator right now. So if you look at outside hires as a whole, um, they had been around 25% and, um, had dropped down to closer to 20%, which is where presently is at. In relation to, uh, certified hiring, uh, from outside, um, it had been about 20% um, in the pandemic year, um, and it has dropped down to closer to 10% uh, since. Um, classified hires from outside the organization had been between 30 and 40% and are presently at about 25%. And then, uh, administrative and confidential staff has gone from about 10%. It's, it's bounced between 10.5, 10.5. The numbers are so small that those, those, any, any movement can be pretty dramatic in percentage points. But relatively speaking, it's been fairly, um, stable around that 5 to 10%. Classification and Compensation Project, I think the folks around me, um, that have to listen to me talk about this, um, have grown pretty tired of it, but it's something that I'm incredibly enthused about and I want to tell you a little bit about. One of the things that has been a goal of mine since I arrived at the district is revising our classification structure. When I arrived, one of the things that I noticed was that was that our nomenclature was that we talked about job titles. We did that in processes and in contracts. And classification should really talk about a class spec and positions within a class spec. And these were essentially conflated into a single thing called job titles. And it made it very difficult to talk about things like classifications and positions within classifications. So one of the things that we've done is we've made a concerted effort to change the nomenclature and be consistent in our use of the nomenclature and talk about classification specifications and talk about positions within classifications. And it may sound minor, but it has shifted the organization's comprehension of and discussion about jobs in the organization. And where it's very, very relevant, for example, to labor association like OSEA is how you classify groups of people is as tremendous bearing on seniority rights. And in the event of having to shrink the organization, how those seniority rights operate. I want to give an example. When I arrived, we had 13, what would be called EA or Education Assistant, job titles, quote unquote. They were not particularly clearly related to function, functional area. As we sat down and began to unpack, oh, I should also mention, that was 13 job titles over six different pay ranges. As we sat down to unpack it, we discovered first, three of them weren't even functions that were education assistants. One was what we now call our campus security and
Campus safety monitors.
Safety and security monitors. One was the folks who provide childcare for our teens who have infants. So there was a couple of these that really were not education assistant-type functionality, but were called EA. We have since looked at the breadth of the work that's done, re-categorized it as EA1, EA2, EA3. We have three pay ranges. We have three classifications. I want to recognize Sean Reinhardt for his work in this area. We have essentially your standard classroom EA. We have EAs that work with kids who have emotional challenges. And we have EAs that work with our most severely disabled kids. So that was an area where we took the body of work. We organized it by nature of work. We applied the correct nomenclature. We now have three classifications, and we have multiple positions in each classification. And so we're talking about it correctly. We're managing it correctly. That's an example. We're stepping into the conversation about classification structure across the organization as relates to our classified group, which is the largest number of classifications. But also, for example, in relation to our certified group, there's multiple things being done by folks holding TSP certification that are besides what we think of as standard classroom teaching. I think we noticed that and discussed that in bargaining this past round, successor bargaining round, when we talked about Article 16 and the fact that the prior construct was essentially built for full-time classroom teachers. And there were a lot of folks who had different sets of needs. And so within our contract, we recognized different sets of needs in terms of prep time, in terms of case management time, in terms of availability for supervision for different types of folks doing different types of functions. That's not exactly the same thing as building separate classifications, but it's very much in tune with that. It's the recognition of the need to differentiate working conditions for certain groups that are doing certain functional work. And then we recently did some work, and we're continuing to do some work with our administrative group. That was, the work we had done was predominantly around our operational classifications. And so we're continuing to do this revised classification structure work and adoption of correct and application of correct nomenclature. We're systematizing our classification and reclassification processes. This was a big part of our conversation with OSEA in bargaining, as Chair Legrand knows. We're systemizing our compensation and market adjustment processes, which was also a big part of the conversation there. We're looking at what does a total comp model look like? What are reliable methodologies for comparator models as we try to understand where we stand relative to others? We've heard about, for example, the settlement in Albany. Where did Albany sit in relation to compensation relative to other districts in the state? That's an important question before we understand whether the numbers, the percentages, are relevant or not relevant to our particular discussion with our particular employee groups. So we're engaged in that work that systemized work as well. And then actually applying these tools, actually applying the constructs. And so, for example, the classified, the extra duty, admin and supervisor confidential classifications. In relation to providing ongoing professional development, in bargaining, we agreed to some language in Article 6. We committed to increased financial support. We committed to school-based professional development teams to work on identifying what professional development staff felt would be the most meaningful. We've worked on, and kudos to Deputy Superintendent Burke for her work on leading, capturing feedback from staff on our trainings with a standardized tool. And then although not Article 6 of the BEA contract, we likewise increased financial support for professional development for our OSEA employees. We've engaged in administrative training. We did three sessions in August of this past summer on investigation. We've presented in the level meetings on managing deficient performance, talking about the difference between managing folks who have performance deficiency and managing circumstances where there's misconduct. What distinguishes them? How do we deal with them differently? How do we step into remediation when remediation is what's called for, not punitive response? And then in the upcoming Admin Professional Learning Series, we'll be talking about managing an union environment predominantly from the viewpoint of how do we not commit ULPs? How do we observe our obligation to bargain mandatory subjects and not engage inadvertently, oftentimes, in what's the word I'm trying to say?
Direct dealing?
Well, no.
Permissive subject.
Well, what I'm trying to say is where we need to engage in bilateral, unilateral, that's the word I was looking for. How do we not engage in unilateral action around topics that are mandatory subjects of bargaining where it requires bilateral conversation? I'm over my time, so I'm going to pop through these last ones quickly. Inviting board participation in labor negotiations. We did that with our chair and our vice chair. As you may recall, in each of our two contracts, they were four-year contracts with finances set for years one and two and reopeners set for years three and four. So we will be stepping after the first of the year and into the spring into negotiations. And we will once again invite the board to have representatives in the negotiations for each of those. And you're not allowed to touch your nose and say not it because participation is tremendously, I was going to say enjoyable, but I'll say certainly important. I'm a little bit of a geek for finding things like negotiations to be interesting. Lastly, in the category of administering, administering and evaluation system linking performance to continued employment. We have the admin eval policy scheduled for review and revision this year. HR and the Deputy Superintendent aren't going to be engaged this year in assessing each employee group's evaluation tool. And we're continuing to lean into that culture of accountability. And by culture of accountability, I want to be real clear. That's not talking about punitive measures. That's talking about consistency and reportability, transparency. That's talking about holding ourselves as leaders to the responsibility to ensure that we're providing folks with the tools. Surely, we have a responsibility when there are folks who are not being successful and have been given resources to go those last steps and deal with that. But that's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about engaging with the system around evaluation, feedback, resource support. So those are the eight areas. There's one area that I've reported on in past sessions that is not listed here that I do want to talk briefly about. And that's our ERP system, Enterprise Resource Planning. As you may recall, there are unified ERPs that have finance and human resources information systems together. A couple of examples people might have heard of or read about. SAP Workday is another one. Those are, really large organizations use those. I kind of chuckle. I don't know if this is funny or not to anybody else. But SAP and Workday, the only place I've ever seen advertising is on golfer shirts. And for some reason, those organizations love to sponsor golfers. But the difficulty is, as we stepped into analysis here, is there are no ERP systems built for school districts that unify finance and HRIS. So what we've had to do is we had to work on, and what the organization had was a finance system only. What we've tried to work on is an HRIS system and then trying to marry the two. And I'll be perfectly frank. It's been a difficult process. It's been a rocky road. You may recall that we purchased UKG, and there were several different features that went live at different points. Personnel actions, recruit and hire, and time and leave all went live in February of '23. The learning module, which is our training module, went live in August. And the evaluation module went live in November. And we have since had to hit the brakes on the utilization of our time and leave module. For better or worse, one of the things that happened was in the configuration process, some decisions were made. Time and leave was one of the first things to be given configuration. And there were some decisions made that prioritized time and leave functionality that we didn't realize at the time would be disruptive to other functionality. And some of that, some of it is the product. Some of it is the configuration decisions that were made. But what we've discovered is that there are ways in which that then, as we've tried to move forward with the system more holistically, we're creating internal problems. And what we've tried to do, the current state is finance system and HRIS system do not talk to one another as had been originally sold to us and promised and expected. And in the current state, the configuration, the elevated one module's functionality at the expense of other functionality, created a circumstance where the third bullet point being, our process was trying to solve it with fixes. A fix here, a fix there, a fix here, a fix there. And that's labor-intensive, and that's not sustainable. So what we've done is we've hit the pause on time and leave, stepped back, and we're doing a full analysis, a full redress. I'm optimistic we won't have to change products. I'm optimistic that with some better coordinated and more thoroughly analyzed implementation or configuration decisions that we will be able to resolve this. But we are not determining what the outcome is until we do the analysis. And so we will do the analysis. We'll figure out what the outcome needs to be. And then we will pursue what we need to do in order to have a more functional ERP. The gold standard within ERP is position management. This organization has managed budget and staffing, and I'm perhaps stealing a little bit of Dan Emerson's thunder with this, has managed budget and staffing with allocation of FTE as opposed to managing positions. And data analysis based on allocations of FTE do not help you understand what is happening with your organization in terms of position trends or any kind of forecasting. You can't do, for example, succession planning. Succession planning, by the way, is not planning who the next people will be. It's seeing whether you've got a problem within your workforce. When I was at Multnomah County, our succession planning processes revealed to us that one-third of our nurses were eligible to retire. That was information we needed to know in the event the state did Persia reform. Because what we know is when the state does Persia reform, you get a lot of folks who leave that are eligible. And we needed to know in advance if the legislature starts talking Persia reform, we need to start figuring out what our solution is to the fact that a third of our nurses might leave. So succession planning is an illustration of where being able to understand your organization by position management is critically important. That's something that we do not have. That's something we discovered that under the current way UKG is structured, we could not turn on and use. And so that's one of the things that we're hopeful with the redress will be able to, not hopeful. Dan would say we must get changed and get fixed. So the future state is to move into position-controlled orientation with our system. I hit the tops of the waves, and I exceeded my time by 50%. So I apologize for the length of time that I've taken. But, and I also apologize that some of these, I gave you a taste, but only scratched the surface of the topic. I'm happy to field any questions that you have. And I'm happy to also individually respond after the session.
Thank you, Steve. Appreciate it very much. Directors, questions, please.
Quick question. Oh, actually, a couple. I'm not very good at acronyms. What is ERP?
Employee, excuse me, Enterprise Resource Planning. And it's a term of art in that industry to refer to systems that manage finance and what they fairly mercenarily call human capital.
Thank you.
People.
Other question. I've talked to a couple other folks on other school boards who were a little surprised about board participation on negotiating, negotiations. And I'm curious, do you see that it's standard practice that there's board participation across the state?
So here's what I can tell you is that for the first, well, for the first five years of my school law practice, I worked for the ESD in the legal services program. And I can't think of a single bargaining that I didn't have school board members on my team. After I left the ESD, I worked for a law firm in Salem, Garrett Heeman, which our district uses for various things. And at Garrett Heeman, I cannot think of any bargaining where I didn't have board members on my team. After working in school law, I spent about 15 years in municipal HR. And it was a mixed environment as to whether or not we had board members on our bargaining teams. I haven't surveyed the state. But if I had to guess at what I think a survey would reveal, I would say that there is commonly board representation in bargaining. I think one of the things that helps with is in negotiation, it's critically important that labor representatives believe that we're talking with the board and that what we say at the table as a spokesperson or what Dr. Cook represents is not just Steve Heron's viewpoint by fiat, but is a representation of the organization's well-thought-out position. And so we rely on board members in the session to be a barometer of the board, to be a conduit of communication with the board. And in being both of those things, to lend credibility to what we're saying across the table as truly what the organization's position is.
Thank you. I appreciate that and some of those details. And perhaps it's maybe larger school districts that this is common practice in addition to ESDs. So maybe that's the difference that I, what I've heard. But thank you. Great presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a question. So I've heard from staff the annoyance of like registering, for example, since my husband does a lot of the CPR training and first aid, that staff have to register on one site, and then he has to go in and pull the data and then enter it into another site in order to enroll someone. And it seems like we know that's an issue, and we're working on fixing it to make it easier for our staff. Do you have any idea of a timeline of when our systems might speak to each other just to reduce the clicks?
Don't answer, don't answer, don't answer that question, Steve.
What I was about to say is that's a great question. And I was about to say, I don't think we know the answer to it because that goes back to the authentic commitment to a meaningful assessment. And really, I think what we need to do is we need to meaningfully assess our systems, decide whether the systems we currently have with reconfiguration are the answer or a departure from the existing systems to some different systems that serve us better in some of those regards. One of the things that, I'm trying really hard not to get on my own little rant, but sometimes the sale sometimes the sales division of an organization will make representations about a product that following implementation you go, this doesn't seem to be working exactly as I recall it being described. So that's part of the problem is trying to figure out, okay, how do we get these two systems to talk to each other? And, and when we get there, what we can do is designate one as the system of record, and then that system will push out to the other system on regular intervals, whatever the categories of data are. And, and that's the thing that we frankly expected these two systems to be able to do with one another when we bought this product. And so I don't know the answer to when we will be able to sort out how to get two non-unified systems to play, to play nice together in the sandbox.
So do you have a client success manager with UKG?
Say one more time?
Do you have a client success manager with UKG to support?
Client success, I'm sorry.
A client success manager to support y'all with UKG?
Thank you. You're talking about from UKG to support us?
Yeah.
To be perfectly frank, I don't know exactly what the UKG representative model is that we're engaged with. I would have to ask my staff exactly what that looks like and who it is that is working with us from UKG. I know that we do have some form of an account manager that we engage with. I don't know the degree to which that's a model that is designed to be deeply problem solving or not. I don't know the answer to that.
And, and how is UKG supporting y'all in the analysis?
I think one of the things that we didn't get, we didn't structure well enough at the front end was our own team and, and knowing who we need to bring to the table as our representative or agent. And as such, we were too dependent upon UKG's folks. So in answer to your question, I think one of the things we want to do is we want to make sure that we're bringing folks, and if it means that we need to retain an expert in the field as a consultant to assist us in knowing the right questions to ask, knowing what things to insist upon getting answers to, then that's something we need to figure out and utilize as we move into discussion with UKG. I don't know that I'm confident having anything less than an independent consultant or representative assisting us in our engagement with UKG. We do that when we're interacting with insurance companies and construction companies. And I think that that's a step that we missed in, in the first iteration of this.
I'm going to interrupt. I want to let the board know proactively that we, as a part of my superintendent's report, we're going to have a conversation about what we've chosen to do with UKG, and I'm going to ask Dan to come up and talk about some of that. So whether, like, we can put, continue to put Steve on the spot with these if we want, but we also have somebody else to put on the spot a little later tonight as well. So just wanted to give you a heads up on that.
So, so I do have a question, if I could jump in. You, you mentioned Steve, the, the fact that the Latinx staffing percentage is quite a bit lower than the percentage of students that are Latinx. And I'm just wondering, do you guys have some strategies on how to increase the applicant pool of those diverse groups?
Thank you for asking that. If I can go back to my slide deck on this screen, please. See if I'm going to go the right way. Yep, okay. Let me go back to this data point for a minute. So if you, if you look across the line at Latinx over the last six years, you see that that's a category that has grown from 4.0 to 6.5, which is actually the significant growth area within our district. And that is, that is largely due to improved processes for mitigating bias at every stage of the recruitment cycle. And in particular, I think as relates to race and ethnicity, seeking out diverse spaces in, in our recruitment processes, we've gone for the last two years to California's largest Hispanic serving institute, for example, as part of our recruitment and job fair activities. So yes, in, in answer to your question, we are doing very specific, very targeted actions to try to address the recruitment processes and, and identify places where limitation or bias prevent us from diversifying our applicant pool and eliminate those barriers or mitigate more accurately probably those barriers so that we continue to grow the diversity of our applicant pool. And, and in that, in the course of that, grow the diversity of our staff representation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve, I do have just a comment to make. We have had these conversations back and forth many times about recruiting and about staffing and about what the board expectations are for mitigating some of our, what we might see as a deficiency. This is probably the most complete report that we've had, and I just want to thank you for that. We have a priority of looking at data and you read between the lines as well as just what the data says. And you've done a nice job of pulling that all together. So thank you for the report.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Director Douglas? She's off. Thank you. Any other directors? Thank you Steve, appreciate you very much.
Thank you very much, appreciate your time.
And I would like to bring Mr. Dan Emerson up. He's not reporting, it's later?
Yeah.
Ah, I'm getting ahead of myself. I see that now. Yes, I know. All right, I knew. As I said, computer issues, don't you love them? The Ben LePine Schools Board Budget Committee is comprised of seven elected members of the school board and several members of the community. The budget committee works with the district staff to review and approve in-school district budgets each year. A budget committee member is term is three years. Both Natasha McFarland and Seth Eisenberg, is it Eisenberg or Eisenberg? Eisenberg, terms on the budget committee expires on June 30 of 2024. Thank you students for being here, appreciate you very much. Yes, go, 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 you're good. And you got to get this, go, go, we understand. You got homework and stuff to do, we understand. Thank you for your commitment to being here, we appreciate you very, very much. All right. Both individuals have expressed a desire to continue to serve on the budget committee. The board will may choose to reappoint one or both of the individual by majority vote or may choose to post the position as vacant. At this time, I would like to entertain a motion.
I move to reappoint Natasha McFarland in the position two seat and Seth Eisenberg in the position three seat to three-year terms on the budget committee.
Can you have a second?
I second.
I was, first motion was given by Director Tatum and second by Director Olson. Call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? I believe the ayes have it, thank you. All right. Here we go. The resolutions, here we go. Yes, I know, I can do them individually, I know. The Oregon School Board Association is an organization, is one general state association originally elected representatives to serve members' participation and representation. Tonight our board members must vote on the central region position three representation, excuse me, representative. OSBA has also been presented, excuse me, presented us with three resolutions to consider approving. We will take them in order. Okay? And the nomination for our region is, I'm, I'm, that's her name every time I see it. Lori, is it Dan?
Dan Zucca.
Right. Dan Zucca from Jefferson County School District is the only candidate on the ballot for a central region, position three on the OSB Board of Directors. At this time, I entertain a motion.
I move to nominate Lori Dan Zucca for OSBA Board of Directors, position three.
May I have a second?
I second.
Any discussion? All right, now for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Yep, Chad Wood and Fisher, yes, thank you very much. And the ayes have it, thank you very much. All right, here's the next piece. The first resolution for our consideration is to amend OSBA's due schedule. The due schedules has been increased since the 1998 and 1999 fiscal year. The resolution recommends an annual due increase of 15% annually until the 2030, 31 fiscal year. Following the 2030 and 2031 year, the dues will increase annually as a percentage in alignment with the Consumer Price Index. At this time, I will entertain a motion.
I move to approve the resolution to amend OSBA's due schedule.
Second.
It has been motion and seconded, any discussion? All right, it's time for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, I think the ayes have it. And the next one. The second resolution for our consideration is to amend OSBA's bylaws related to the composition of the Board of Directors. This resolution creates the Oregon School Board Members Pride Caucus and designates a seat for the representative on the OSBA Board of Directors and legislative policy committee. At this time, we'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the resolution to amend OSBA's 2023 bylaws.
I have a second?
I have a second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, and now it's time to call for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? The ayes have it. And the final resolution for our consideration is to amend OSBA's 2023 bylaws. This resolution adopts the proposed amendments to the OSB bylaws. The bracketed language included in the proposal, bylaws amends pertaining to the addition of the Oregon School Board Members Pride Caucus is dependent upon the passage of Resolution Two. As Resolution Two does not pass, the bracket language will be removed from the OSBA bylaws. At this time, I would like to entertain a motion.
Pardon me Marcus, I read the fourth instead of, okay.
I move to-
I move to approve the resolution to amend OSBA's 2023 bylaws.
Seconded.
Okay, we have in motion and we have a second. If, any room for discussion? Okay, it's now for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, the ayes have it. And I think that concludes our resolutions for OSBA. Yes, now I will turn it over to, now is this where Dan comes in?
Nope.
Oh, is it Steve first? Yes, I will turn it over to Dr. Cook to present the administrative policies and regulations to the district review.
Thank you Chair Legrand. And as you know, this is that time of the meeting where we present administrative policies and regulations that we'll be pushing out to the community to get feedback. There's a large list this time. I would just editorial on this, we did a little bit of checking today, and we have just under 400 policies and since, under our tenure, since Janet and I have both been in, serving in our respective roles for the district, we've put our hands on 180 of those 400 policies. And so there is, while at times it can be daunting to, to review this many policies at once, we do feel like there's a need and a commitment to continue to work on every single one of the policies because that's where the work of the district gets established across the system. And so this is one of those months where there's a large batch of policies that are going out. Glad to take any feedback or comments that you might have at this time, we'll be, we'll be collecting review and feedback from the community for, until December 31st of this, this year. So if you have any questions, glad to answer those.
Not a question, just a comment that in the staff highlights that went out today, or yesterday, whenever, today, okay. The breakdown and graphic representation of the choice programs and how you do it and where you do it and where you go for additional information was very helpful. So my assumption is, without looking at every one of these in detail, that drafts will echo that process that we advertised.
That's actually already accurate. It's just, we're doing a more thorough job of, of chasing those in, in a kind of a proactive manner to make sure we're giving people the most information we can so they can make their best decisions.
Yes, and we understand that the decision deadlines are upon us. So it's very important to get this information out, and I would hope that we have some feedback.
Directors? All right, thank you very much. And now I will turn it over to Dr. Cook for superintendent report.
Now, this is where I'm going to ask Dan to come up here in just a minute. He can go ahead and get on his way up while I'm talking about the rest of my superintendent's report. I have three items I want to share with you today. The first one is we continue our work on the after action report for Pilot Butte Middle School. I anticipate that we're going to be able to present to this board something more formal at the January meeting. I will tell you that our, we have multiple departments working on this. There's a lot of good information. One of the things that you may have seen is this commitment and part, we have a lot of partnerships in this community. And, and I will say, and I'm grateful for the public commenters tonight, this kind of recommitment, if you will, to safe gun storage and messaging that across the community and being in relationship with other groups in the district. We now have, I have an example here that I'm glad to share with folks. This is a gun lock that we have that we're giving out downstairs in this building. This won't be the only location, we are going to have other locations in the district. And it's interesting, we've had a lot of conversations about whether or not schools are the best places for these. There tends to be an openness to coming to schools and district facilities that might be different than, say, for example, a police department. And so we're glad to partner with that. The other thing that we're providing with, when people ask for one of these gun storage systems or gun lock systems, we have a lot of, we have options with that, is a card that is a connection to a website that's called Be Smart for Kids, which just doubles down and emphasizes in, in two languages, by the way, securing your guns, modeling responsible and respectful behavior around guns, asking about the presence in others' homes, recognizing the role of guns in suicide and telling your peers to be smart, just, and then access to the website where this is also a promotion. And so this is just one piece of, of part of the after action report, and we will be presenting more on that in the next month. The second thing is, good and bad news, I think maybe, is a, is a good way to talk about it. It's the, you may have heard about this, that the state passed a law in the short session in which there's a recognition for special education staff in which there was $8.9 million to be allocated from the state specifically to staff that are, that serve, and I'm going to paraphrase the law, there's actually a very specific language that lives in the law, any person that spends 75% or more of their time focused on supporting students with special needs. The good news is that's money that, that once we compile the, the list of staff that would qualify for that based upon their job activities, they will receive that stipend from the state if they are, they still work in the district. It's a point in time measurement, which for a district our size can be a challenge because did they work here then? Did they work here at this particular time? This is just, I think the date is December 2nd or 3rd, yeah, 2nd. And then this stipend will be allocated to staff that qualify, I think mid-May. We have to have all this data turned into the state, middle of January. The part that is a bad, bad news piece of this is it's only money that is allocated to the stipend portion of it. Districts are going to have to make up the associated costs, and if you recall, associated cost for us is about 40% of the total cost. So the math on this for our portion of that- So the math on this for our portion of that, and this is the, under the assumption that all districts in the state do the qualifying for this, that's going to cost us somewhere between $250,000 and $300,000 that wasn't budgeted. So while we are truly honored and supportive of recognizing special education staff and impact of the folks that work with our students, it's a little bit of a tough pill to swallow because the associated costs were not, and specifically, were earmarked not to be included in this allocation from the state. So like I said, a little bit of good news, a little bit of bad news with that. And then the last thing is, ironically, is what Steve spent a little bit of time talking about. And that is, I just want to give you a little bit of update. You know, last, about a month ago, we pushed out information that said, we've got to stop with UKG time of leave for a minute because it is creating additional work on our staff. It is causing double entry in some cases, and putting a tremendous amount of work on our payroll team. And so we're about to step into that very first month, if you will, of going, what I would say, kind of back in time to an older strategy to make sure that we're getting our folks taken care of. And so I've asked Dan to come in and talk a little bit about the changes in that process just to, to ensure that we still are meeting the goals of making sure everybody gets paid, making sure that people's leave is recorded accurately, and that we're not being punitive because of a lack of recording systems. And so, Dan, if you wouldn't mind sharing some of that information. And I don't, maybe you and Steve need to coordinate better next time, so we're not doubling up on reporting, so.
No, no, Steve did a great job, so I'm cognizant of the time too. So I'll try to touch on some aspects that maybe Steve Heron didn't. Good evening, Board, for the record, Dan Emerson, Chief Financial Officer, Ben La Pine Schools. So I think what Steve Heron said was, was very accurate. We, we had a global engineering failure related to some aspects of UKG, and so that was a technical failure. We also probably did not implement things in, in the correct way in some instances as well. Some of that goes back to the sales team, and some of that probably falls on us as, as a staff to make sure that we're asking the right questions and we're going through the process and doing our due diligence. I would say, actually, beyond the double entry and the massive amount of hours that payroll and HR staff were working, the largest reason that we had to go back to payroll was actually time and leave accuracy. We had multiple instances where we were either overpaying or underpaying staff, and that's obviously a large liability. And we also had instances across the district of leave balances showing up at zero in our product. And so that was making it hard for anyone to request time off despite the fact that they did actually have a balance. And so what we found effectively is that when we rolled over this year with UKG, multiple, there were multiple system failures due in September when we had that first payroll, and they continued in both finance and HR lanes. And so that is why we had to move to a paper and time, time and leave process. We are currently, as Dr. Cook alluded to, in the middle of our first paper process. The finance and HR team provided hours and hours and multiple trainings and video recordings for office managers, administrators, and staff. We provided multiple communications. We have a repository on our staff portal. We recently conducted a survey, and about, I won't say 90 to 95% of office managers who are kind of the primary point of contact felt very confident and happy about the move and to the process. They felt like their voices were heard, actually, about some of the errors that have been popping up. We did have, I think, one person that was hesitant still, but we also have had open office hours and are conducting one-on-ones to make sure it's a smooth transition. The payroll team right now is processing those payroll. They're in the middle of processing the paper time sheets, and it's going, I would say, fairly well, actually really well, considering that this is our first month back in a process like this. I would say the last thing is kind of the solution moving forward, right? We don't always want to be in paper. We have a multidisciplinary team, about 10 folks right now, myself included, of HR, IT, and finance, looking into both the technical aspects. Why did we have technical rollover failures in September and October of this year? And also our processes and implementation. There were probably some aspects where we tried to put our paper process into a, into, into the product, right? And sometimes we have to adapt our processes to the product for it to be successful. And so we are going over those things right now. We do have a UKG client success rep. They will be meeting with us on Thursday, along with, I believe, at least five different engineers for their modules. They'll be meeting with us for three hours, and we'll continue to have meetings through, with them through the month. And we've identified over 25, 25 different technical issues, including the setup of position control management that Steve Heron spoke to, that we'd like them to address every single one of those. And we will have all of our IT and HR and finance staff applicable in those meetings to go through it. We also have our finance vendor, Business Plus, will be coming as well to go over technical and process solutions that they may have. Essentially, Business Plus is from Power Schools. They do this all the way across the country, and we're very interested to hear what they have to say about our processes and how these things typically would look inside of a system. We anticipate that probably by the end of the month, we'll have a lot of great feedback on technically where some of the issues are, whether it was a global engineering failure or whether we just didn't implement it correctly, or whether it was never set up on the technical backend correctly. And then we'll go explore options in terms of vendors and solutions. We may retain the same vendor, we may not, but I think we need to do, as Steve alluded to, Steve Heron, a full analysis to understand. And then we're committed to implementing this and coming back with a, with a better, stronger product, whether it's UKG or something else. And then I'm going to open up for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Cook. Appreciate it very much.
I actually had one question for Superintendent Cook. I'm just curious when the board can expect an update on the strategic plan that you've been working on?
I would expect we can have something along those lines early in, probably February? Yeah.
Thank you. All right. We will now open the floor for Board, Board Comment. Director Tomlin, what we normally do at the end is the directors, if they have any comments or any, any concerns, we allow them to come up and just be able to do those things. And I normally go from, you know, my left, this way. And since you're online and you've been dealing, would you have anything for us tonight?
Absolutely, Chair Legrand. I just want to let, let you know I'm thrilled to be part of this board at this point, and I greatly appreciate all the support that I've received to get me ready for this board meeting. I enjoyed the reports and the presentations tonight. I learned so much from going through the board packet and listening to the presentations. But it also points out very strongly how much I have yet to learn. I, I love hearing from students. It was great seeing Ally recognized and listening to Cooper, Iris, and Finnegan talk about the Student Voice Council. And I look forward to learning more about that. And I'm greatly looking forward to learning more, visiting all the district schools, and meeting as many students, faculty, and staff as, as I can over the coming months. So I'm glad to be here.
Thank you, Director Tomlin. Appreciate you very, very much, and hope your wife feels better as well. Director Olson?
Since we had a rather short meeting in November, I just want to recognize that the attendance at OSBA's Fall Conference was very rewarding and had a chance to meet some new folks. And as Cameron alluded to, we had some conversations with other board members that kind of opened our eyes and brought some of our questions out also. So the presentations were wonderful, and thank you for allowing us to attend.
Director Fisher?
I want to mention how pleased I am that Ross can join us today, so welcome. And I also want to commend the district on taking further action on firearm safety and making things more, increasing awareness and information for that. In addition, I'd like to note that the majority of student school shooters have been bullied relentlessly. And as I, much as I appreciate the conversation, looking at prevention, I, with regard to firearm safety, et cetera, and, and the swift action that Pilot Butte Middle School took and Ben Tech Academy, et cetera, I would propose that we have a really in-depth presentation very soon with regard to what the district is doing on bullying prevention and addressing bullying that we all know exists. And I really, I think it's very timely that Ally was given that award. And it's good for us to hear about it. And I, I'd like to see in conjunction some further information for us as a board. And yeah, I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Fisher. Director Hadaway?
Yeah. I had an opportunity to visit a few schools with Tammy and Karen, Katie and Steven. And it was really awesome to be in those schools and see how they run, how they tick. Specifically, I just want to commend Cascade Middle School in how many students' eyes I actually saw in the classrooms. They were not, you know, it was almost like the complete opposite of what we hear a lot about with tech in the classroom. And so it was really refreshing and not, not necessarily what I expected. So I was happy to see that. Also wanted to commend Ella Bachi Galupi, who's a junior from Ben High and attended the county commissioners' meeting last week and represented the Healthy Schools program. And it was just really, I love seeing how many community-based organizations and Deschutes County have partnerships with our school district. It really does feel, well, I know, we all hear, we're, we all care about our students. And it's really, it's, it's great to see that happen. Also wanted to just give a shout out to the Office of DEI and Latino Family Night, Mountain View. There were so many folks in attendance, and it was really fun. And then I'll just, I'll just, I'll just end with just thanking the cabinet for all their thankless hours. So all y'all in the back there who are still here with us, thank you for everything you do. Yeah.
Thank you.
I was going to say exactly what Cameron said, so I'm just going to say, welcome, Ross. I'm very happy you're here. I'm very thankful you bring your years of experience and knowledge to the board, and I look forward to learning from you and helping you acclimate to this board because I know it's a huge learning curve when you first join. And then I want to thank, again, our public commenters tonight about gun safety and safe storage. And again, you know, to any parents and families listening, you know, the onus of safe storage is on us as adults. You know, our students should not have access to weapons unsecured. And so, you know, if you don't have a gun lock, you can come, we can give you them, we can keep our kids safe. You know, your student should not have access to a gun. That's how school shootings happen, is because as parents, we are not being responsible with gun ownership. So I hope our community steps up. I hope Pilot Butte was a learning experience, so it doesn't happen again, and we don't have to experience the type of tragedy that so many communities in our country have. Thank you.
All right, thank you, directors. And my final remarks are from, similar to Director Olson. I know our meeting last month was kind of short, but I had some closing remarks that I wanted to say then, and I'm trying, I just kind of tailored them for today. In my remarks, there are a few things I want to mention. As education shifts, and as we go on holiday break, I want to remind that our role as educators is more than just the numbers, the assignments, and the tests. We all know education is about compassion for students, our families, about building relationships, listening to diverse ideas, and passionate ideas at that. And are equitable, and most of all, mostly inclusive, and all-inclusive. So I'd like to thank the custodians, the bus drivers, nutritionists, the classified, the certified, the bill administrators, the district leadership, our community partners for continuing to uphold the values of education. And if no one has told you in a while, thank you very, very much. We appreciate you for all that you do. And as a veteran, I was not feeling honorable that day. During the parade, until one of the students in our community reminded me of why I continue to uphold the oath as a service member. I was standing next to other veterans who were wearing paraphernalia for their service. As many students walked up to them, thanking for their service, they walked right by me. Until the young lady asked me if I was a veteran. As in the moment, I wasn't feeling othered because as a Black American, I, I knew the contribution of my community allowed a lot of Americans to continue having the freedoms we enjoy. Without the enslaved joining the fight in the Civil War, without the Tassiki Airman, so forth and so on. In short, I want to thank that young lady, one of our students here in Ben La Pine. She reminded us, educators, we impact our students more way than we ever know. And I want to thank her for noticing me and not othering me in the moment, and I appreciate her for asking me, even though I didn't have any paraphernalia on me. So I thank that student for that day. And as a reminder, our next board meeting is scheduled for January 14th, 2025. With that being said, I hope you have a happy holiday season, and this meeting is adjourned.
Play a power stream, guys. Yeah. A lot of stuff on this.
Oh, bye, Ross.